Good evening, everyone. We called to order the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for this April 4th, 2017. We have six of seven commissioners in attendance this evening. We excuse Commissioner Nicole Luthy. We welcome the public who's in attendance this evening. Thank you for participating in the public process. We have two items on our consent calendar. Item 1A, approval of minutes from March 21st, 2017, and 1B, deferral of construction of road improvements.
Can I just real quickly abstain from that vote since I was not at the last meeting?
You can vote on the minutes.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Queen.
Well, I was gonna make the wrong color button.
I move to approve the minutes. Let's get down to the packet.
Second.
Thank you. We have motion from Commissioner Queen and a second from Commissioner Hanson. Any discussion of that motion? Let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Commissioner Green.
I move that we approve item 1B on the consent calendar to deferral the construction of road improvements in the Longview West subdivision.
Thank you. We have motion from Commissioner Green, a second from Commissioner Queen. Any discussion of that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Which brings us to our first public hearing on the agenda this evening. Clean Machine, 9706 South Prosperity Road. A conditional use permit for machine operations in the drinking water source protection overlay in an M1 zone. Clean Machine, Ken Curry is the applicant. Is he present this evening? Thank you, Mr. Curry. Please come forward and tell us about your application.
Thank you very much. Several months ago, when we, prior to constructing a new building located at that address, we came before the board for a, we had some, our loading dock doors were in a particular direction that we had to get approval of, which we did prior to construction. And we've now to the point where the building is complete. And as part of that, Clean Machine needs to get a conditional use permit because of the location of the building within the overlay of the drinking water source protection area. And so, we, with the help of Mark Forsyth, we was able to complete all the information requested. We did, keep it in mind when building our facility, we did do it to help protect environment from any type of things that we may be doing within our operations. One of them was, we put no floor drains within our entire manufacturing facility. Also, we added a sand and grease trap out front to make sure that it would catch anything that we get through. We do have, we do have very good control of our operations. We're a precision component part manufacturer, manufacturing parts in the medical, aerospace, semiconductor, and other commercial industries that we make high-precision parts. It's a little different than what a lot of people think is a machine shop is. It's all CNC controlled machines in a very, very controlled environment, and it's really quite a high-tech business. And we're really quite excited to move into our new facility out in West Jordan.
Well, great. Thank you very much. Do we have any questions for Mr. Curry? Okay, thank you. We'll reserve some time for you if there's anything you'd like to address after the public comment section.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And we will go over to city staff. Mr. Forsyth, you have this item.
Thank you, Chairman. So, as the applicants already gone over, they were, this development has already gone before the planning commission about a year ago as part of the ACJ properties development. So, that's been approved. Construction's now complete. They're just waiting on their business license, which, when it went through planning staff review, we just found that there wasn't a conditional use permit on this location for a machine shop. And so, that's essentially why we're here tonight. So, the site's located within the M1 zone, which is a light industrial zone, and it's also within the boundaries of a 15-year protection area of the drinking water source protection overlay. So, machine shops are actually a permitted use within the M1 zone. They're just considered general manufacturing. But in the drinking water source protection overlay, that use table specifically lists machine shops. So, basically, the purpose of that is just to ensure that the aquifer will be protected and that best practices are followed to make sure that that will be protected. So, the nearest aquifer, you actually can't see it on the map up here, but that is actually half a mile away from the Clean Machine property, just on the property that's on the east side of the Danan facility. So, basically, up and around the block. So, this machine shop will actually take up about half the space of the warehouse building. As the applicant said, everything's fully paved, building's fully enclosed, there's no floor drains, which will so protect that and help to contain any spills that may or may not occur. The exterior of the site, too, has also been protected in the form of, all parking lots and driveways are surrounded by curb and gutter. Everything drains to the storm drain system, which drains into a sand and grease trap, which filters out any chemicals or contaminants before entering the city stormwater system. Then, as far as specific chemicals, they'll be storing six different types of machine oil and one type of coolant. All of these will be stored inside the warehouse in 55-gallon drums. And all of these drums are no more than two years old, so they should be in pretty good condition. And in addition to that, they'll also be protected by a 100-gallon capacity drip pan, which will help to contain any leaks or any major spills. So, based on these findings and those explained in the staff report, staff recommends the planning commission grant approval of the conditional use permit for Clean Machine located at 9706 South Prosperity Road with the conditions of approval listed in the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Forsyth. Any questions for staff? We have Commissioner Sokowski and then Commissioner Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a quick question on page three of the staff report. It says all these chemicals will be stored in 5-gallon drums. It goes on, it says all drums are relatively new, with the oldest drum being two years old. All of the oil drums, with the exception of the Blaster Vaskomil 22 machine oil, will have a secondary containment system consisting of 100-gallon drip pans. I'm just wondering, why is that last 55-gallon drum not going to be contained? And what would be the consequences of that if it got into the drinking water system?
Well, if it doesn't have a drip pan, there's still the possibility that it's going to be stored inside the building. Since there's no floor drains within that building, I mean, most of it would just spurt out and probably spread to the walls at the very most, which would give them time to take the necessary precautions to clean that up and get that contained. But as far as specifically, I suppose the applicant could address that.
All right. Maybe we can have him come back up at the end.
Definitely. Great. Yes, thank you, Mr. Forsyth. We'll have the applicant, Mr. Curry, address that. Commissioner Green.
Well, that was, I'm gonna follow up on the drip pans. So, the question, so if the oil, if the oil and these other materials are stored in 55-gallon drums, is each 55-gallon drum, does it have a 100-gallon drip pan? Or is it 100-gallon drip pan per two? That may be a better question for the applicant. Do you have any idea?
I don't. Not that, from the table that's shown on the screen.
All right. Well, you can back up after the public hearing, we can address that.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions for staff? All right. We'll move ahead to the public hearing session. If any of you would like to speak on this item, please feel free to come to the podium. Please state your name and your address for the public record, since this will be typed and it's being recorded, so people can access it afterward. And you'll have up to three minutes to state any comments that you would like, any questions that you have. We can then direct those to staff or the applicant. Make sure that you get your questions answered. So, we'll open the public hearing at this point. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And let's please bring Mr. Curry back up to address the drip pan item, please.
I think a little bit of clarification will help this quite a bit. Basically, is what you can see up here is that there's various types of oils, from hydraulic oil to spindle oil to gearbox oil, hydraulic oil. Those are primarily oils that are used in the machine tools, the CNC pieces of equipment. And so, what happens is, we actually have, they're in plastic drums that line up across a rack. Underneath the rack is the drip pan, okay? And honestly, the chance of a leak from the plastic containers is virtually nonexistent. However, where the problem comes in is when every time somebody comes up and they bring the oil can over and they open up the little spout and it goes into the can, some can just drip onto the floor or whatever. And that's where the drip pan comes in. And it's 100-gallon capacity that can handle a lot of oil. And if we saw something where this thing was filling up or something like that, we'd certainly do something to address it. And most likely, where the problem would come from would probably be from like a spout or something like that, for most.
Great. Thank you. So, that itself is the primary container, and then the drip pan would be a secondary recourse?
Exactly. And it's more or less because people come up and maybe they're not real careful about how they fill their little oil can that they take over. It allows them to catch that so that you don't have the drip all over the floor and, you know, make a mess.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Sokowski or Commissioner Green, does that answer your questions? Do you have any?
Yeah, it does. I still have a concern, but he answered the question.
Yeah. Great. Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you, sir.
Do you want me to address on the coolant issue?
Oh, coolant. Yes, please. Thank you.
There was, is what that is, is we utilize what's called a machining coolant, this diluted, it's a one-part coolant to 10 parts of water. And what that's used for is to cool the cutting, our end mills and drills and things that we use to cut the materials. And it cools it, and it's recycled within the machine. It uses it over and over. And basically, that is, we have a pretty elaborate way that it's mixed so that it's done properly. And that's basically an apparatus we put on top of a 55-gallon drum. That's a new drum that basically, we go through a drum of those at least one a month. So, that's as old as the 55-gallon drum typically would be. So, the chances of that, they can be very little.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Appreciate that. Thank you, sir. Well, let's bring this back to the commission for further deliberation. Commissioner Green.
So, here's my question back to staff. And this goes back to when we were dealing with the drinking water overlay zone with the fuel tank that other development wanted a couple of meetings ago. And they had to build, they had to build a containment tank that was big enough to hold all of the fuel in case something broke, or most of it. The way this sounds, if we had a catastrophic failure, and I get that we're dealing with 55-gallon plastic drums, and I've had a 55-gallon plastic drum in the back of my garage with water in it for 20 years, and it hasn't failed yet, at least that I haven't seen. But, understanding that we have to figure out that there, you know, a plan for catastrophic failure, is the drip pan big enough for the catastrophic failure that we're dealing with with the amount of chemicals that are there? What I'm concerned of is if something failed and it overflows that 100-gallon drip pan, and it happens at sometime at night, and the materials could leak through concrete seams or those kind of things, we still could contaminate the drinking zone. And so, that's where I'm, you can see where I'm going. That's where I'm asking.
For these reasons, we take these types of uses to the commission for discussion, and there's not anything specifically listed in the code that would address Commissioner Green's concerns. You have to weigh the potential risk versus the potential mitigation measures that you're going to ask of the various applicants that come before you. I don't know if there's anything that, okay, it looks like the fire chief wants to.
A fuel tank outside is different from what we're seeing in here. The fire code requires that any type of fuel tank that's on the exterior of the building has to have containment because of this flammable liquid. Once it's outside of that container, then it becomes an extreme hazard to the containment area, to the building, all that kind of stuff. Being somewhat familiar with a lot of these liquids up here, there is no flammability to them. They're ones and zeros, with five being the worst. So, any type of spillage that comes out, first of all, doesn't render a potential conflagration that may happen within the building. Second of all, having been out to the facility and seen the measures that they've gone to in order to create a facility, you could look at the building as almost a secondary containment unit. They have such intricate and, what's the word? Sensitive, that's the one. See, I'm a firefighter. We don't have a lot of sensitivity, so I don't play the role. But a lot of sensitive equipment, and so they've gone to great measures to make sure that the floor is stable and it's solid, that the seams are filled with caulking, and so they don't have movement in there. So, I understand what you're saying as far as fluid leaking into seams and possibly down in the ground. But having walked the facility a number of times, I don't see that really being a great concern in this type of situation. If we did have open joints in the concrete floor and it was really a big machine shop type of situation, then yeah, I think we could look at that. But what I've seen at this facility, just my personal opinion, I don't see where it would be a big concern. It's really a big secondary containment unit that they have now.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Brock. Thanks. So, yeah, I, to beat to my own drum, so to speak, I've got those water bins, you know, it's been 20 years, but true, so I guess that's primary, and you got a secondary drip pan, and then the tertiary cement floor, you know, inside containment.
So, can I, would any of these chemicals be anything that if they spilled, we had a catastrophic failure, would be considered hazmat at all?
No, not necessarily. Where they could come into effect is down the years, down the road, years, somebody has a ground request requesting any type of fluids or chemicals or that type of stuff. We may have to submit reports as to what they had on there, but none of it would require a hazmat response from the fire department.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Brock. Commissioner Sokowski.
Thank you. I looked at the material safety data sheet on this Blaster Vaskomil 22 machining oil, and the only concern that I have is it says, "As with any other lubricating oil, these binding oil agents, spills or leaks may cause slippery conditions." And then it says, "Prevent material from getting into storm sewers or surface waters." I know we talked about floor drains in the building and that the building has a 100-gallon catchment underneath with sand traps. Would that be sufficient to protect from getting into the storm drain system?
Not having studied the underground detention system and things like that, by the fact that it's 100 gallons and we only have 55 gallons, one would assume, generally, for a secondary containment, we look at the full capacity plus 10% as far as, for a fuel tank anyway.
And that will meet the standard code and everything.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any other thoughts on it, Commissioner? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Sokowski.
Thank you. Well, based on the findings set forth in the staff report, I recommend that the planning commission approve the conditional use permit for the machine shop within the drinking water source protection overlay for Clean Machine located at 9706 South Prosperity Road in an M1 zone with the conditions set forth in the staff report.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Sokowski and a second by Commissioner Queen. Any discussion of that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No. You have me.
So, motion carries five to one with Commissioner Green casting a dissenting vote. And as a rider, we might want to put on air sensitivity training for the fire department.
I don't know. I kinda like the less sensitive.
Okay. Very cool. Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda, we have Clay Hollow C, Parkside Commons, 5415 West, 7800 South, preliminary development plan, PC zone. Peterson Development, Brandon Peterson is the applicant. Please come forward, sir.
Basically, we're just trying to, this is similar to what we came in a few weeks ago to do something to the west, Clay Hollow B. This is C, and it's basically development plan for, I don't know, that parcel in the red. Right now, it's two, slightly, it's two parcels with the remainder piece. Lot seven, we're basically trying to do some kind of a medical office use, and the other is unknown right now. But we own the ground to the south and are in the process of getting, working with the city on that residentially. And other than that, do you have any questions? Of me?
Any questions for the applicant? Not right now, sir. Thank you. We'll reserve some time for you later in the meeting.
Thanks.
Great. Let's go to staff. Mr. McCandless, you have Clay Hollow C this evening?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, you've seen the preliminary development plan for the property to the west. Just as a little bit of history, what happens is that we, the city council approved the concept development plan for the entire Stone Creek development. And as each of these areas develop, we come in with a preliminary plan, and then the final plan, final development plan is handled administratively. And then, as each one of these lots develop, so come in for site plan reviews. So, we have a number of options a number of times that you have a chance to take a look at this, to make sure that it's compatible, that it works with the areas that are surrounding it. This again is just for the preliminary development plan approval for Clay Hollow C. It's very similar to what you approved in Clay Hollow B. We really don't have any issues with it. We recommend approval. But just as the site knows, when we handed out the P V, we did receive some questions from one of the residents, and staff has addressed those and gave a few responses to those questions. If you have any questions, we can answer them.
Great. And thank you for referencing that. Yes, so both you, Mr. McCandless, and Todd Johnson replied to Rachel Lyon's questions, and we have those on file here. Thank you. Any questions for staff? All right. Thank you. Let's go to the public hearing portion of this item. If anyone would like to speak on item number three, Clay Hollow C, Parkside Commons, please feel free to come forward and address it at this time. Seeing none, we'll close the public comment section and bring it back to the commission. Commissioner Green.
Just for the public, for the rep, for the public record, that the email that we got, do we need the, is that for the record or do we have to add that to the record?
If you wanted to make a statement that you received and put it on the record, that's fine. You definitely don't need to read it into the record, just state that you received.
Okay. But we can, do we need a motion for that?
No.
Or we can just?
Part of the record.
So, we can just say that we've included that in the record and address those comments then?
Yes, thank you. Any other comments for the commission? Or potential motion? Commissioner Sokowski.
Hey, Mr. Chairman. I move that the planning commission approve the preliminary development plan for Stone Creek Marketplace, Clay Hollow C, for the property located approximately 7800 South, 5600 West, in the PC zoning district.
Second. A motion by Commissioner Sokowski and a second by Commissioner Queen. Any discussion to that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, six to zero. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number four, D. Smith Acres, PO rezone, 1075 to 1150 West, 9000 South, rezone 8.25 acres from A5 agricultural five-acre lots to PO professional office zone. Ryan Engineering Incorporated is the applicant. Is he, please come forward. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to give a little explanation of what we're doing.
Yes, could you please state your name for the record, sir?
My name is K. Ryan.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm the owner of Ryan Engineering. And I've lived down here since 1968, and the property was on A5 when I moved down there, but there wasn't any five-acre lots in the, it was one and two-acre lots. It's still mostly the same. And when I moved down, it was in the county. We had our own water system and we had no sewer. And then we got annexed into West Jordan, and they brought the sewer to us and took over our water system. And so, we've seen a lot of changes since then, and our group hasn't really changed, but on east of us is those apartments that have been built. And to the south of us, I think we just had a subdivision approved a month or so ago. And to the west of us is a zone for commercial. And back in 2014, the council voted to set that property, our property that's under discussion here, as a professional office zone, because it was in between the commercial and the high-density residential. And so, anyway, we all got together and decided that we'd like to go and get the zoning actually approved so that we could look at what our options were as far as developing the property. Now, there is one, if you notice, there's a jog in the line there on the very east end. That was all part of Dean Smith's property also. And I think they came in and asked for residential zoning on it, and I'm not sure what the status of that is. All I know is that when I first brought this thing in, I included in my map, I included it, and then they called me and told me to take it off, that it was being considered for residential lots. So, anyway, that's basically it. If you have any questions, I guess you'll call me back, huh? If you have any questions, I guess you'll call me back, huh?
Great, thank you, Mr. Ryan. Any questions for him this evening from the commission? Right, thank you, sir. We'll reserve some time if there's anything else you'd like to address after the public comments section. And Mr. McCandless, you have this item as well, correct?
Yes. Thank you. This property again is just located on the, it's the corner of 90 South and 1075 West. Apartments that are here, this is all currently zone A5, still zone A5, agricultural zone. The applicants are requesting to rezone that to professional office zoning. Back in 2013, as you noticed in your staff report, the city council directed staff to take a look at the properties in the city and find out if there were any areas that were shown as either higher, very high density on our future land use map, and then to see if there was a more appropriate zoning that could be, that needed to be applied to those areas. So there ended up being two areas, one by Drake Lane on Redwood Road, and it was this property. So prior to that time, this area was designated on the future land use map as a very high density residential. So we, we looked at it, and I think we held a neighborhood meeting, it went through the planning commission, the city council, city council finally opted to change the future land use map to professional office, with the zoning as A5. So what these, the app that wants to do now is just rezone that to, to the professional office zoning that's consistent with the general plan. This is that area, this is our future land use map. The area that they put on the future land use map is professional offices, the area that's with the yellow hash marks. This property is not part of the rezoning. And again, I just noticed, note that this is, used to be very high density residential. This is the current zoning, it's A5. This is kind of the boundary of the property. You'll notice there are some areas that are across 90 South that are still in zone A5, there's some A5 zoning that's still here to the west of it. But everything that's, that's west of that is in zone SC2, which is a community shopping center zone. This is what they'd like to do, is just to rezone it to professional offices, as I mentioned earlier. That could provide just kind of a concept plan of how the property might develop at some point in the future with offices and parking around that, still use some options for accessing this property as it develops in the future. Those were my slides, and that's really what's on the table for you this evening to consider. Any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Great, thank you, Mr. McCandless. Any questions for staff at this point? All right, well, let's open up the public comments section for this item. Anyone that would like to speak regarding D. Smith Acres PO rezone, please feel free to come forward.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Eric Landen, Attorney. I represent Rob Barris. Rob Barris is the owner of Lot 028, the one that's cut out of this thing. This meeting came as quite a surprise to us. In fact, I found out about it from Mr. Langford just before five o'clock today. We appeared at a city council meeting on February 22nd for a rezone to put Lot 28 into three residential lots. And our understanding from that means the city council directed staff to get with Mr. Barris and to talk through some possible rezoning to residential and other of this larger section or some portions of it. To date, Mr. Barris has not been contacted by staff to do that, and we just found out today that there'd been this proposal on the table. Mr. Langford did email me, I was kind of jumping in the car to come up here, he emailed me that a notice was apparently sent to Mr. Barris, according to the city's records, but my client never received any notice. The only reason he found out anything was going on is he called Mr. Ryan today, who said there was some kind of a neighborhood meeting, is what he called it, a plot for ring trade, sounded like it was here. So I was trying to get on the phone with the city attorney and find out what was before you, didn't know we were here for a public hearing until just now. So my client had no notice of this. This comes as some source of frustration to my client, who's been working on this for about 11 years. We, we think that what the city council had intended is for us to work with staff and consider some larger residential zoning. We certainly would oppose what's being proposed today, and it certainly puts my client in a bad situation, not having been involved in the process. We'd asked that this commission consider tabling this, sending it back, allowing my client to participate in this process and be involved. When I spoke to Mr. Langford, he indicated that one of the things he'd asked is, to one of the neighbors, is whether or not Mr. Barris had been contacting, and he was told that they were. I don't know who he spoke to, I'm sure he can speak to that, but, so on the one hand, we have, we have Mr. K. Ryan, who told my client today that he was, that he was told by staff not to contact Mr. Barris. And so this, this has just been frustrating, confusing for us. We'd like to be involved in the process. This has been a 10 or 11 year process for my client. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. We'll definitely address that. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Commissioner Hanson, is that for right now or after the public comments section?
I would just like to ask the attorney a question, if I could.
Oh, yes, please. Sir, could you please come back up to the podium? Thank you.
Do we need to suspend the rules for that?
No, it's still inside the.
I haven't been suspended for a long time.
I think we're okay.
Does Mr. Barris occupy the home there?
No, no ma'am, he does not.
The rules are you send out a letter to everyone living within 300 feet of the property. The letter properly was sent to that address. Mr. Barris should not receive it. The owner? Okay, that was mine to say.
Yeah, I appreciate the point. The, the address that was sent to me is the address that would be the right address, he just didn't receive any, any correspondence.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Hanson. Great, would anyone else like to speak on this item?
My name is Robert Barris, and my address is 1040 East State Under North in Orem. It took me four years to get River Rock subdivision through your city. I didn't ask for a zone change, I didn't ask for one amendment, but it took four really years to work through your staff, through your planning commission, and through your city council. I finally did that subdivision. For 11 years, I've been coming back to your city asking for a rezone on that, because I put some new water lines and sewer lines in that, I worked with staff. In my 25 years of doing this, I've never dealt with anything quite like this in my entire life. For 11 years, I came to staff either once a year or twice a year, asking for help. And it wasn't until Tom Burdette pulled me aside about two years, and goes, says, "Rob, come, come meet with us and let's talk about this." And I came up very quickly, and I said, "Staff, I would like just a four lot subdivision." At the end of the meeting, they asked if I changed it to three lots, they'd give me favorable recommendation. I re-engineered it, I resurinated it, and I submitted to it. I've been in that process for 18 months. Approximately five weeks ago, I went with your city council, and at the end of the deliberation with your city council, your mayor stopped, asked if we could table this, and very politely turned to the staff and said, "Would you get with Mr. Barris and see if there's some type of a solution to this issue, so we don't lose it? And his 11 years isn't lost tonight in one single vote." After that meeting, I called some neighbors to see if I could put some more property together. I have some favorable yeses, I have some people that don't want to sell, and that's their right. I don't have a problem with that. But over the last few weeks, I've been trying to parcel a little bit together, because I do have a buyer to do something on that property. I found out, and this is their right to do, I, I found out that the neighborhood was getting together to rezonate professional offices. I asked them what it included, I was given bits and pieces, but not the entire story. I asked them, I said, "I can't support that, because I have a buyer that would like to do something on professional offices." Ladies and gentlemen, I cannot find in 11 years anybody to come here and do professional offices. The market's not here, the real estate market isn't there for it. It might be in five years, it might be in 10 years, it might be in 15 years. But I asked very politely for Mr. Ryan to table this, so I could work with staff and some homeowners. I called today as a follow-up, and that's how I found out. I was told on the phone that this was a neighborhood meeting, not a planning commission meeting. My attorney had a movie with his children tonight that they had bought tickets for. I had some other business tonight that I had to attend to. At five o'clock, we find this all out, and we both head up here and drop all our other stuff. I received no letter. If I had had a letter, if it was a week ago or two weeks ago, I would have been on the phone immediately. I, I received no letter. I feel like the staff, I felt like I'm just being cited and turned around, and it's just really confusing. It's really disconcerting. I respect their right to want to rezonate, but for what I'd like to do, and if I can buy, I've been told by one landowner that they're willing to work with me on a purchase. On another one note, that if I can put a couple of pieces together, I'd love to come and work on a different solution to this property. It just doesn't happen to be professional offices. If you zoned a professional offices, is it going to take me another 10 or 11 years to try to put something? That's my concern. And I just feel like I, I just have nowhere with either the city or any of the bodies. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Barris. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public comments section and bring it back to the commission. I'd like to ask staff if they could please speak to Mr. Barris' legal counsel comments about not being noticed and how that might have happened? Address, communication?
I'll speak to that. I scan out those notices. I go through a map, make sure that every parcel matches what is on the Salt Lake County Recorders website for property owners, and they're mailed out. Sometimes mail gets lost, I don't know if that happened in this case, but it was mailed out to me.
So this would have been mailed out to the Orem address of Mr. Barris?
I would have to look at the list. I don't have it memorized, but.
We looked at that, and yes, indeed, it did go to the Orem address. Okay.
And it would have been a week and a half to two weeks ago.
Great, thank you. Thank you. And we just want to ensure that it was, now, we're not trying to, personally, I'm not trying to say who's wrong or who's right. As was mentioned, tabling it is an option. We just want to make sure that we do the right thing, certainly with the longevity of this situation going back and forth. Any comments or questions from the commission? Commissioner Green?
Yes. I will tell you that if we decide to table this, I won't be in favor of that. This particular piece of property, let me ask the staff, how long has it been on the land use map as PO?
2014, I believe.
Okay. So it's been, it's been a couple of years.
Yes, 2014.
Okay. From my perspective, looking at 90 South, and a couple other, you know, the, and Mr. Barris isn't going to like this comment, but when he came before this body and asked for a rezone, we rejected it. And we rejected it because this commission thought that the PO zone was a more appropriate use for the land. From my perspective, the PO zone is probably a better use of land than trying to put residential in here. From a public policy perspective, the, this city, and I'll say it, and there will probably be some other city policymakers that don't like this, but we, we have routinely been trying to fit hundreds of homes into small acres, small lot, and a bunch of small lots and other things. And this commission's been pretty consistent recently, at least the last, since I've been appointed, of maintaining some integrity for some commercial and some other types of zones. And at some point in time, this city needs to have some economic development and some zoning for that. We've seen zones on Redwood Road or PO that have gone by the wayside. We've seen commercial zones at 78 South and Bacchus Highway turn into small apartments and, or small homes and those kind of things, that I think we need to maintain some integrity of having some, some other types of development in the city besides rooftops. I, I think this is a good buffer. When we, when we had a public hearing here a couple of weeks ago, everybody complained about the traffic on Hidden Peak Road. And if we talk about some sort of future thing, going back and looking at this as residential, we're going to, the, the traffic issues aren't going to change, because all the traffic's used twice a day going in and out, that's where all the traffic problems are. And this may actually be a good buffer to spread out some of the traffic issues and not cause as much traffic on, on Hidden Peak, and help alleviate some of the issues. I, I mean, I don't see UDOT putting in a traffic semaphore at 1075 West for a while. I don't, you know, we'll see what the traffic morgues come through with that, but I don't, I don't see that anytime in the near future, because the only time that 90 South gets bad is morning and at night. And during the rest of the day, it's really not that bad there. So at the end of the day, that's where I stand on this, and that's where I'll, you know, I, I think I'm going to support the rezon here.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Green. Before we get to Commissioner Sikowski and Commissioner Quinn, who have noticed that they'd like to mention a comment, I, I'd just like, like to ask our legal counsel a question, because it might help target our communication, since we want to make sure we are on target, that this is a Ryan application, not a Barris application. And could you please speak perhaps maybe some pros and cons of tabling it for more time versus, Mr. Barris, for instance, would like to table it for more time, Mr. Ryan would like to move forward, is there any problem with giving two additional weeks? It's not necessarily a negative finding, but we just want to ensure everything is done.
Before he jumps in.
Yes.
I have time at the pre-meeting. The meeting on April 18th is canceled, so the next meeting would be May 2nd.
That's true. Yep, yeah, so we're talking four weeks here. Could you speak to some pros and cons, Mr. Barris, Mr. Ryan?
I can. Whether or not the council or the commission decides to table the item is at your discretion, and there's no foreseeable damage that can be caused by that. At this point, they're not looking to build, they're not waiting to get permitted, they're not ready to go, so I don't know if any foreseeable damages would be caused from that. In this capacity, where it's a zoning change, you guys are a recommending body, you're not an approving body. So if you did approve it tonight and send it on to council, it would still have that time period for re-noticing, re-public hearing, getting it out to council again, and then they would have another hearing to attend and address it that time before actual zoning change would occur upon approval by city council. So tabling it would give them time to address those issues. In a way, approval would give them time to address those issues as well. Whether or not the individual received notice, under the code, we've, we've provided ample notice, we've required, we're required to do it in statute. We did provide public notice by publication, and we also did it through mailing of property owner, which is what is required. Due process requires that surrounding property owners be allowed to come to a public hearing, to be heard, and to address any concerns that they have. That's happened tonight. Now, whether or not he found out through the letter, through the public hearing we posted in the paper, on the public notice webpage, through the state, or this afternoon through staff, he was heard tonight, he may not have gotten the notice that they would prefer, but that's not what the statute requires. Statute requires we comply with mailing notice in the paper and notice on the webpage. So the benefit of tabling would be to those surrounding property owners, if they wish to be heard, there was only one here tonight, approval, moving it on to council, they would not be denied that due process, they would again be allowed to be heard at city council before actual approval. And so tabling would give them that same timeframe, would give them maybe a month more due to the counseling of the next meeting, but I don't know in this scenario that there's injury to either party by either tabling or by approval. That's at your discretion.
Great, thank you very much. Commissioner Sikowski?
Thank you. Two things. First, I'm not very much in, well, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Green in that I don't think we should table it. As council's just stated, there's still ample time for, before a decision's going to be made, based on the previous issue with, well, the previous item was dropped by. the previous item was brought by Mr. Barris before. I feel like our decision was very well thought out. We talked about it quite in length, as I recall. My opinion on that hasn't changed. So I, I feel like we move forward with it tonight and they still have time to work with one another before the actual decision is made. That being said, I am quite curious to know if Mr. Ryan and his group have any potential developers that are interested in building professional office on this lot at this time? Or if we're looking at simply just changing the zoning arbitrarily? I feel like that would help me make my decision based on what we've talked about tonight. So I, I would ask that either we suspend rules or we wait until the end, but bring Mr. Ryan back up so that I can ask that question.
Definitely. Thank you. And of course, we should have given Mr. Ryan an opportunity to come back up as we do with all applicants after the close of the public comment section, so I apologize for that. So I would be in favor of suspending the rules. Is that a motion?
Motion to suspend rules. Bring Mr. Ryan.
All second to that in discussion, that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Mr. Ryan, could you please come forward and speak to any comments that were made in the public comment section?
Okay. Let's see. I had a discussion with Mr. Barris, I can't remember the date, but it was first part of March. And we discussed, I told him I wanted to do professional offices and he said, he did not agree with that. He thought we should do single-family homes. And he had already applied for single-family homes. So when I came down with my application and the city asked me if I had talked to Mr. Barris, I said, yes, I had talked to him. And he told me that he wanted us to go for single-family homes rather than... So there was disagreement there between me and him on that. I did talk to him today. He called me. And I, my recollection of the hearings, I told him there was a public hearing tonight, 6 o'clock, and he was here. And he was unaware of it. He said he never received notification. And the other thing was, when I first did that map, I, it said in the thing that we needed to have at least 75% of the people in favor of, of the thing. We had everyone in favor except, everyone had signed the affidavit except Barris. So I just included that on the map originally, and then I was called and told to take it off the map because he had applied for the other zone. Couldn't do both, I guess. So I wasn't really aware that, that Mr. Barris hadn't received any notification until today when he called. That's the first time I found out that he didn't know what was going on.
Thank you. And can you also speak to Commissioner Sikowski's question regarding any potential buyers or developers for commercial?
Well, I haven't got any, anybody that's committed to it, let's put it that way. But I have been talking to about three or four different development groups. And they all told me that when I got the zoning changed to come talk to them again, they, they didn't really... They weren't the ones that were coming asking me if they could do it. I was the one that was talking to them. But I do have people that are in.
Thank you. If you wanted to ask any other questions?
Thank you. That answered my question.
Thank you, sir. Well, let's bring this back to the commission for further deliberation into a possible motion. Commissioner Hanson?
Thank you. I believe that if we table this, it's going to put it off for a month because we don't have a meeting in two weeks. If we send a recommendation forward to the city council, they still have to be notified. So it's still putting that off a month. And so I just feel like tabling it is kind of hard on Mr. Ryan. I understand Mr. Barris' situation and his frustration in trying to do a residential development there. My own personal opinion is 90th South isn't really conducive to residential development. I know myself, I wouldn't want to live on 90th South with the traffic. I was coming down tonight, it was backed up to Redwood Road from 27th West. So they talk about a lot, but that is a UDOT decision. That isn't a decision we could make. And so I just don't see that there would be that much difference in sending forward a recommendation to the city council, having it re-noticed, because they're going to be the ones that make that decision in the end.
Thank you, Commissioner Hanson. Commissioners, do you have a comment?
No, I was going to hit the red button. He did.
Commissioner Sikowski?
Thank you. Before I make the motion, I'd just like to state that, again, this is a hearing for Mr. Ryan. And the commission has already addressed previously Mr. Barris' property rezoning request. And we've made that decision. If, if city council wants to change that, then that is their right. So based on what, what we have to find, it's the highest and best use for the property. And we have already decided as a commission that what Mr. Barris wants is not the highest and best use. And we recommend at that point that the overlay remain as professional office. That being said, based on the findings set forth in the staff report and upon the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission forward positive recommendation to the city council to rezone approximately 8.25 acres of land generally located at 1075 to 1150 West, 90th South, from A5 agricultural lots to PO professional office zone.
Second?
A motion by Commissioner Sikowski and a second by Commissioner Hanson. Any discussion to that motion?
I would like to add one comment for the record, and I think we, we need to, I, I would like to add to the record that we find a specific finding of fact that appropriate notice was sent and posted. So can I amend that? Is that a friendly amendment that we, that I include a specific finding of fact that notice was?
Just to clarify, posting does not occur until canceled.
Appropriate, well, posting on the website did, so.
Correct.
Appropriate, appropriate notice according to the Open Meetings Act was, was adequately given. We'll rephrase that.
Would you accept that friendly amendment?
I will accept that.
Commissioner Hanson?
Yes.
Great. So we have that friendly amendment motion and seconded. Thank you, Commissioner Green, for making that comment. We have the motion by Commissioner Sikowski, a second by Commissioner Hanson again. Any further discussion to that amended motion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
Motion carries five to one with Commissioner Hatch casting the dissent vote. Which brings us to agenda item number five, Oker West, 7800 South, Highway U-11, preliminary development plan in a PC zone, Holmes Homes, Patrick Holmes is the applicant. Please come forward, sir.
Thank you. My name is Mike Kelly. I am the land planner consultant with Holmes Homes. And I'm representing them tonight. It's good to be back with you again. We finally made it through our general plan and zoning amendments with the city council, and now we're here for our next step. This is the concept plan you've seen before. I think the staff report pointed out that there were a couple of lots that, that moved from one category up to a different one. They, there were a couple of lots that got a little bit larger. And this resulted in, in some, that we're doing, some center lines of roads weren't aligned because of large trail on one side of the intersection, not on the other. And so we expect those kind of little tweaks to come along as, as that happens. But that's, that's one minor change that has happened at this point. The concept plan is pretty consistent with what we presented before. Like I say, there will be some, some minor adjustments as this comes along. We have been in discussions with the city about a water tank site. And I think that's going to happen on our property as well. We are, as a reminder, in low range of our densities for both the high density and the low density portions of our property. We have in the medium density side, five units per acre, on the low, 1.9. And overall, we have 3.5 units per acre. We are still with a total of 435 units and 17% of those are townhomes. One of the biggest changes we've made since you've last seen this in our phasing plan. The city council was, was particularly concerned, I think as you were too, with the amenity package that would happen upfront in the early stages of our development. And so Phase One has, has been increased to, oh, I'm sorry, increased to include roughly 100 lots. There's 98 lots in that first phase. And it is all centered around the community park that will contain a soccer field and picnic facility and other facilities like that. You can see our temporary access for emergency vehicles that is being permitted off U-11. And that will provide a secondary access to Phase One. Then each of the subsequent phases are each about 50 units in each phase. And so we'll develop a little bit faster than I think we initially anticipated. That is the phasing. You can see in that, in that first one, we're including 98 units, the commercial park. We hope to be able to start this year. And if that happens next year, we would begin developing the second phase. And, and you can see from our phasing plan that, that that would provide this connection back down to 7800 South to the roundabout. So we would have another circulation connection there. I'd like to just get into the parks a little bit. We've, we've provided a little bit of additional detail, as you see in your packets, about some of the amenities that are in there. This is a picnic shelter that, that we'd be looking at, another picnic shelter and playground equipment in that lower park. And then we've defined what facilities need to be in that restroom building. And that is per the county codes for the size of pool that we're talking about. Then you've seen this trails plan before, and we would like to just show some of that in a little bit closer detail. As we go into that community park in the lower portion of the property, there's a couple of different trail sections there. The purple shows, I'm sorry, the purple shows this trail that is an expanded sidewalk along that right of way adjacent to the open space. And that will provide some access there. This green trail that comes off of that alignment down into the park will work down across that slope and, and provide us access that way. This is the trail that aligns between the townhome products that are within there. And you can see on the lower portion of that, that it does tie into that park down below. But this will be a trail that moves through those townhome products that are in our plan. And then the blue trail is, is in the neighborhoods and just continues through all of those neighborhoods, provides a couple of different loops, and that would occur in front of some of our houses that are along there. This red one is along our arterial streets. This will be along, along 7800 South on, on our side of that 7800. And then, as you can see, we move up into our project and where we hit those first lots, there would be a house across the street with, with the trail on the side of the park. This is a street tree plan that we've developed using the guidelines in the city, Street Tree Master Plan. We've selected trees from those and used a variety of trees or higher-end materials and to distinguish neighborhoods and those kind of things. Do you have any questions for me about what we perceive it with?
Any questions? We have to. Not this time, thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Mr. McCandless, you have this item as well. Got a hat trick tonight. Dream it real.
Thank you. Members of the planning commission, this is again for, before you this afternoon, this evening, for preliminary development plan. This has come to you a number of times in the past. I think we walked you through the, the history on that in our staff reports. With this particular project, I mentioned in the pre-meeting, we did, the applicant has gone to a lot of effort to bring the plan up to, to the preliminary development plan level in that concept. And they've added, gone beyond that, now added additional information just to show you what would be held on the, on some of the area. The, in our, in your staff report, we broke down a number of lots by, you know, rough lot sizes. The number of lots between 5,000 and 6,000 square feet has not changed since the concept plan. It shows 107, so it's 99 lots below between 5 and 6,000 square feet. But there are 117 lots that are over 10,000 square feet. 45 lots between 8 and 10,000 square feet, and then 61 lots between 6 and 7,000 square feet. In addition to that, there are 28 garden lots that have a lot size of just a little over 45 square feet. So again, we, the plan still includes the church site. The open spaces was presented in the original development plan, the commercial space. We did mention as part of the concept plan that there are some lots that are up in the west hand side, on the west side of this development that will not be able to be developed until an offsite water tank is, is being constructed. The applicant is, is aware of that. We did receive the concept plan that shows a rough location of the, the water tank up in this area. With that, we, as we indicated in your staff report, recommend approval or recommend that the planning commission forward positive recommendations to the city council. This does go to the city council for, for approval of the preliminary development plan. So with that, I wonder if you have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for city staff? Commissioner Green?
Yeah, I've got one. So as we're looking, as I'm looking at this, in the preliminary, so I want to make sure, so in the preliminary development plan, this is going to be. So in the preliminary development plan, this is going to be, um, this talks about certain house styles being with, and with the setbacks and the house styles that are going to be put on those, on those properties. Is that part of the preliminary development plan or is that something else? And this, this is only to help show what's going to happen?
This is a preliminary, the law's go through the final approval with staff. But our expectation is, is that these, the homes that we're proposing will comply with the setback that are shown in the preliminary.
The reason why I ask that is that there's at least one house design here. The way that I read the plans and the way I look at the, the, the lot, and I'm also looking at the, the code. The code specifically says that garage, if the garage faces directly on a public or private street, it'll be a setback, um, and the porch, and the, and the dwelling or the covered porch of at least five feet. And I am looking at at least one design, the Brianna, that, that, that the door is not set back five feet. Not by the plan, not by the design, not by the picture. And so my concern is, is that are we, are we, if we approve this kind of a plan, are we approving that house to be on that kind of a lot when it's not conforming with the ordinance?
What you said, you said the Brianna.
Uh-huh. And I'm, I'm specifically looking at the flag lot site, site plan. The pages aren't numbered very well, so. It's down in the typical setbacks and those kind of i- in that area. And it talks about the Brianna and it shows it on the flag lot site plan. And it is not, as far as I can tell, based on the plan nor the, uh, nor the picture of it, does it meet the, the code requirement.
Now, when we, when we look at each of these houses as they come on, we make sure that they do comply with that, that code requirement. So if it doesn't comply, then you can't approve that plan. So it's got to have that four, it's got to have that front porch and it's got to meet that code requirement.
Where does that happen with you guys?
It happens when they submit for building plans.
Okay.
Every building plan is, is reviewed.
Okay. So it's not necessarily part of the preliminary site plan, although they say it is, it's really not. The enforcement happens at the building, the building level.
Correct.
Okay.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Sikoski?
Thank you. Uh, I noticed in the, on page, so on page 12, we have the old, uh, initial proposed general plan. And then on page 14, we see the, the plan that they're currently, uh, sending to us. First is potential site for a city water tank. Um, how far along are we going to have to be before that has to become a reality in order for, uh, all of the development to finish? I realize that, you know, we're talking 10, 15 years out, depending on how fast we develop out. But I'm just curious, at what point does it become a strain on the system before we, we add that water tank?
You're probably just, the, the water tank, the offsite tank, right? The one that's future?
Yeah, there's one.
Zone seven, future tank or the one that goes to the west? I just want to make sure.
It's, it's to the western, uh, point. If you look at the drawing up there, um, it's, on ours on, on page 14, it's kind of in that little triangle right there.
Okay, yeah. Um, I couldn't tell you exactly when. Um, we do have a master plan that, that calls for that water tank. Every time a new project comes in, even, uh, the first thing we do is we send it to our utilities manager. He, he looks at that, he, he actually puts it into his model.
Okay.
Um, so it's something we're constantly updating the model and we're constantly keeping an eye on that.
So with each additional phase that's going in, this is going to be looked at again and again?
Every single phase. In fact, every project that comes through, um, we, we look at that and we prepare a utility, water utility availability letter that we provide to the applicant. Um, goes to our, the county board of health to, to show them that we have the ability to provide services at some of the day review before they'll sign off on a plan. So it's a, it's a constant thing. And if we get to the point where generally we're, we're going to know well, well in advance.
Right.
And we're going to sound the alarm, you know, before we, you know, keep doing these. But at the other, but on the other hand, we also, as we're monitoring that, that's how we program our priorities in our, in our water system facilities. And, and that's how we decide, you know, where to spend our money and commit our funds and resources.
Sure.
Um, it's not a concern that, at a, at a concept plan that we would have, you know, the, we would worry that something that, you know, that, these phases will be, you know, starting in probably a year at best.
Yeah.
That the water would actually be needed and then it's probably, I think you said, and we all agree, just looking at, that's, that's at least a 10-year build out.
Right, it's, it's a long ways. I just wanted to know if there was, kind of what the, the process was to kind of trigger that. So that actually answers my question.
It, it, just so you, it is an ongoing, constant thing.
Thank you.
So, can I follow up? How long does it take to build a tank like that?
From the time you start digging dirt till the time it's done, it's, uh, six months, eight months.
It's a short ti- it's a short-term project and?
Yeah, but there's, there's actually more time in design and programming the cost and everything. So you're actually, it's in your system far ahead of that.
Yeah. Great, thank you. Any other comment or questions for staff? All right, this, who is, this is a public meeting. Let's open the public comment section if anyone would like to speak on this.
I think they all left.
Still got to do it.
Yep. Good job.
Going once, going twice, we will close the public comment section and bring it back to cities, to, uh, the council for comments and village. Our commissioner Hanson.
Thank you. Um, I really appreciate the work that you have put in into this with all of the coming back and seeing us and, and explaining everything. My concern again, as last time, is the number of small lots. They will be done first because you can't do the large lots until you have a water tank. Um, you have 115 in the low density. You have 216 in medium density. The 1,000 to 10,000 square foot lots, 45, fine. Um, the 7,000 to 8,000, you don't have 11, no problem. You have 160 in the 5 and 6,000. That is the part that bothers me. I believe that downgrades this development because the larger lots won't be done maybe for years, depending on the water tank, depending on sales, depending on everything. And so we're looking at that many small lots that eventually, as we have seen in other 5,000 square foot lots subdivisions, become rentals. Rental people don't care if they take care of their property, it doesn't belong to them. And so we have that problem in our city. And that's the problem that I had last time. I still have that same problem. Again, I realize you have put a lot of work in. I also realize this is a difficult piece of property to develop. But that is the sticking point with me is how many more of the small lots you're going to have in comparison to any other part of the subdivision.
Thank you, Commissioner Hanson. Any other comments?
Just one quick one for, for me. I, I've been studying planning now for a couple of years up at the University of Utah. And I like the product that you brought us. I, I tend to lean with Commissioner Hanson on, uh, the amount of small lots. I don't necessarily like that, but, but the design of the community is very good. Um, I like that we have the higher density closer to the, to the, uh, you know, bigger roads. I like that you've intermixed the townhomes throughout the community rather than just slap these engineered pods. Um, it has a lot more of a lockable feel. Uh, I like the trail system that goes through it. I like that you guys have, um, considered putting in a swimming pool and a, and a park and things like that. They're fairly central to the design. I, I like it a whole lot better than the initial plan that came before us. And I, and I really appreciate you guys going back to the drawing board and taking our initial suggestions and, and working through those. Um, I think this has the potential to be a very beautiful, uh, a very beautiful subdivision. And my only plea would be that I would ask that you guys would really put your all into making sure that the finishes and everything match the beauty of the development that you designed so that it maintains its, its beauty in the long run. And, uh, yeah, that's all I have.
Commissioner Green?
I do agree. Uh, in fact, I, I think my biggest concern is I'd, I'd rather see the big lots developed first than the little ones. Uh, because I, I, I think what you described could be an issue. And that as you get all the, the little ones built, all of a sudden people are moving in and out of those before the big ones are built and it's going to chase people away from the big ones. Um, so what I'm going to, and it has nothing to do with the preliminary development plan as well. But I'm, there, there, because of the parks and everything, you're going to have to have an HOA. Um, what I'm going to recommend, and I, we haven't seen those, and, and I would recommend that, then, is that, um, you guys take a look at some CCNRs to make sure that the lots are, somehow that the lots are maintained. Um, so that, uh, that the value in the neighborhood, that if they do go to rental, if for some reason they do go to rentals, that, that the property and those lots are maintained at a standard that will not chase people away from some of the other developments or, or the other part of the development. Because that, that's actually my biggest fear is that you, you're going to get to a point, you're going to have a couple hundred small, small homes. And people that see the bigger lots are going to say, well, but if these are dumpy homes, why do I want to build next to them? And I think that's my biggest fear. So if you can take a look at some CCNRs or some other things to take care of those, I, I think that would probably go a long way in keeping this development exactly what you're talking about, Commissioner Sikoski, that, that it maintains the, the level of the development and the thought that they put into the project.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. So for our legal counsel, how much latitude do we have on that to make it a condition of approval to have, you know, a two-year non-rental CCNR or phasing? You know, can we mandate that phasing be adjusted so that all of the high density are built out first? Just seeing what the parameter?
As far as you being able to put a moratorium on renting, that's not a good plan.
I know.
You regulate that through the type of zoning involvement you can have in that area and whether there'd be apartment. You are going to have a hard time telling someone they can't lease their property. Uh, as second in your question, as far as changing the phasing and ordering the phasing around, you walk the fine line there as well because the, the project's only viable in only pencils in certain ways. So you're changing your hat from planning commission to developer at that point. And you need to make sure that you only wear one of them.
Great, thank you. And that's what I was assuming because there is that fine line between. I, I, I agree with everything that has been said. I too am not a fan of those smaller 4,000, 5,000, 6,000 square foot lots. But mixed into this, we do have, let's say we've got 45% that are 8,000 square feet, 32% excluding the townhomes are over 10,000 square feet. And so I do like the mix as Commissioner Sikoski said, that it's not all just high density one area, low density another. This way people can co-mingle and it's not a blight on one area. You, you've mixed up the park and the swimming pool and the basketball court and the church and the trails. And as Commissioner Hanson said, it is a difficult piece to work with. And even though I would like to see some of those lot sizes be bigger, I, I understand from a developer's standpoint, you know, and phasing and, um, I too am grateful that this is much better than what we saw the first go around. And as Mr. McCandless said, gosh, this goes back to 2014 with the Capitol Bridge. And then we saw this in January and then we saw it in May and we saw it in August. It's been kicking around. And so I think it's gotten better and better. And so I guess the question before us, is it better enough to, uh, to pass the muster of what we're looking for for the future of Washington? So let's have a comment first. We've got Commissioner Hanson, because that's the question we're intending.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I, I totally agree with your comments. Um, I would like to remind the commission that when we kicked this back to homes, homes the first time, um, some of our concerns were, are the driveways going to be deep enough to accommodate cars? Are we, uh, providing enough open space close enough to the smaller homes? Um, are the uses mixed enough to qualify for a good, uh, planned community? Are we providing enough trees and trail systems? And I feel like from the initial plan, which you can see on, uh, page 12, I believe it is, in the staff report, um, to what they came back to us with on page 14, um, there's, there's quite a bit of difference, uh, in the design. And I know that the one is colored all in and, and pretty. But, but, uh, I feel like, uh, a lot of the items that were initially discussed as a problem were addressed and, and worked out. So, um, I would just like to, uh, remind the commission that we've discussed that before the meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. No, it's not Commissioner Green, it's Commissioner Quiney.
It says right about, you know?
My, my, I forgot your, you forgot your little, your little. I know, it's, they're down in the other office. Commissioner Quiney.
Um, I, I wanted real quickly for my, my motion, just wanted to say I think this is a great product. You have done a great job. Take everything we've asked you to do and consider it and come back with, with what I think is a, not the best case scenario for this place. So good job. Um, so that being said, based on the findings that were from the staff report, wait, I'm losing that. Where's that page at? Which one is it?
I was looking for the page.
I was looking. What I had is, as I started reading, it's not right there.
I would like to report to, I don't know if it's in there. We might shut it up.
Does it, does it have the, the reservation and stuff? I don't have the right word there. I can add others, I guess.
We'll, we'll make it. I can blame me either. Based on the conversation tonight and the conversation we've had in the pre meeting and the information in the packet, I move it before positive recommendation to the city council for this plan at the open west planned community in 30, 300 South and U-11. That get us there?
Yeah, works for me.
Second.
Okay, we've got a double second.
How about? I, I think you got to buy it. A thousandth of a second. So we'll go a motion by Commissioner Quiney, a second by Commissioner Green. Any discussion to this motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries five to one with Commissioner Hanson casting a dissenting vote. Which brings us to the end of our agenda. A friendly reminder to all the commissioners and staff that we do not have a meeting on April 18th.
Is that because of tax day or because of 23 model council?
Yeah, both, absolutely. So our next meeting will be May 2nd. So happy light jacket day on the 25th of April, since we won't be seeing each other. That doesn't make any sense. Go watch Miss Congeniality. Very important, light jacket day and other holidays such as Easter if anyone so celebrates that. Thank you for working together. Any, do we have anything else from staff?
Real quick, Julie. Um, this is actually, Julie reminded me, um, the, the planning commission in the past few meetings has asked for revamping staff reports and, and improving the, our, our material we give to you. Um, first question I have for the commission, um, is if, if we go to an electronic packet versus the paper copies that we give to you now, i- is there?
the paper copies that we give to you now, is there a preference, and it doesn't have to be all or nothing, if we can go down the line real quick, and if we can do a quick tally, what your preference would be? If we, start with Commissioner.
Electronic.
Electronic, okay. Yeah, electronic?
Electronic. I like doing it format, but I still prefer a hard copy, because they're old school, so I can mark it up.
There we go.
What are you talking about?
I, I like to get the hard copy as well. I like taking notes during the meeting.
Electronic, but I got to bring my iPad in and have them fix it down.
Well, that, that's kind of the second half of the question that I'm working with IT. If we do electronic packets and provide a tablet, you know, if, if we do go that route, then it'll likely be, everybody will, will get one, and we'll have to see if it makes sense to continue at that point to, to do actual paper copies, but for the time being, it helps Julie in, in preparation, we can cut down the amount of paper we go through and, and so.
Well, great, if that helps, the reason I prefer the hard copy is just I don't have a good device to look at it, to look at it.
Thanks for that.
But if we could have it, I mean, I just upgraded my track to the cassette page, so I'm totally in line with the technology and ask.
My goodness, we're proud of you.
Do you have any other questions?
We get some electronic, I can just bring some little paper to.
Yeah, maybe we just get a little legal pad.
Will the city providing the iPads?
Potentially, that's part of the discussion.
We have them just for the meeting.
If you want to do that now with your own device. Mine's all screwed up, and it comes from IT, and it was on the council. And they said just keep it for this, but it's, it's not working at all, so.
Yeah, if I could get a laptop or an iPad or whatever, I just don't have a device that I can bring in, or.
Just got to get you into like, my neighbors.
What's just the, the cost? And we get outdated every year or two. I've got this new fangled thing called a PC. So I do use that.
Let's see, I think that's it, all that I had. Just to keep the commission apprised of changes, there was a little discussion today about economic development, and along those lines, the, the council, what, two weeks ago, approved a new director position just for development. And so Dave Oak is no longer director over community development, he's economic development director, and now I have that new role as community development director and city planner for the time being. So I may not be here as frequently as, as I have been in the past, but I'll keep my eye on all of you. I'll just have to weigh, weigh my, my schedule to be here, but we've got fantastic staff that are more capable, more than capable of communicating information to you, so.
Great, I'm sorry to be in the book.
But, yeah, I think that's all I had. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Well, great, thank you. And also just a reminder for all commissioners, because we have five Tuesdays in the month on, on May, are, we do have our regular meetings the first and third week, so the second of May, and 16th of May, and then there's also on the fifth week, so that would be the 30th of May, the joint planning commission and city council workshop from 5:30 to 7:30 in the community room, to make sure you have that on your calendar. Remember, was we meeting for pre-meeting?
Pardon?
No, it's down on the first floor.
First floor.
Okay.
And in that regard, if you have any specific topics, trainings, or, or information that we can prepare ahead of time, please send me an email and we can, we can get that all queued up. We'll definitely, as we get closer to that meeting, send you an agenda, so you know what to expect that evening. But in the meantime, if you have a particular topic or issue you'd like to address, when we have the council's attention, please let me know.
Great, thanks. The only thing, the first thing that comes to mind is where the scope of our powers lie. You know, to understand the difference between quasi-judicial, quasi-justiciable, and what we can do, what we, what we can't do, so. Yeah? Great, thank you. Anything else?
Move, do your.
Second.
So move, we stand adjourned, somebody second.